She has this quality of compassion where she's willing to help out her peers at all times. And then, on the other hand, she is laser focused for what she wants to happen. She sets goals, she attacks them, and she does this all with grace. And she's just a great friend and a hard worker in the classroom. So you are so deserving of this, and congratulations.
We're gonna go back here a little bit. Pretty awesome. I was a big deal. So, I mean, great job. It's really awesome. You're really focused on goals. You're a hard worker. I'm sure she does great in school.
She does amazing in school, yeah.
You help your friends out, and those are all leadership qualities. And you're just gonna keep doing great things, so keep doing that. So, what we have for you is a couple goodies. We have a certificate, and this will help you remember tonight the accomplishments. And then we have a gift card for Barnes &amp; Noble to go get a book that you like to read. Congratulations. Good job.
We'll do those at the end. Okay, up next, Parkside Elementary.
I'm excited to introduce all of you to Lionel, a fifth grader in Mrs. Kiddo's class, an incredibly hard worker, a leader at Parkside, and the most recent star on my YouTube channel. He's featured in the PBIS Read Allowed this month. So kids across the building got to hear Lionel read a story to them, including his younger brother, who I heard thought it was pretty cool to see you on YouTube, Lionel. So, Mrs. Kiddo?
I'm here to talk about Lionel tonight. His behavior and character serve as an exceptional model for all the students. He's a shining example of what a student should be. He's always attentive, eager to learn, and a joy to have in class. His positive attitude is contagious. Beyond his academic achievements, he's kind and compassionate. He is always considerate of others, respectful of authority, and a loyal friend. I have a little example of that. We were in class, and I had said, "Class, get out your activity books." And somebody in the back went, "Why?" And he said, "Because she told you to." I thought, wow, that's really respecting authority and just always doing the right thing. His positive attitude and willingness to help his peers create a supportive and inclusive classroom environment.
Lionel, I'm Teresa, and I'm excited to give you this congratulation. It sounds like you were incredibly deserving. Thank you for being such a great leader at Parkside and in the community. It is exciting to draw those amazing qualities that you have. And it's gonna be great to see you carry those out, not only through Parkside this year, but then to the middle school and all throughout the community. So congratulations. We have a certificate for you to remember tonight, and then a gift certificate for Barnes &amp; Noble. Again, congratulations.
All right, this month's award winner at Monroe Middle School is Ally Miller. She is the epitome of our cheesy characteristics. And my favorite part of last week was when Ms. Donovan and I got to pull her to the office and tell her she was our award winner. I thought she was gonna bust through the door and start that cross-country meet early. So Ally, I'm gonna have Ms. Henneke and Ms. McGuire talk about you.
So I know Ally through being her science teacher all through last year, and I think that energy is like the thing that sets you apart. Like, I don't know if you can feel that, just being in the room, but like, you're like the sun. Like, everything around you just like grows a little, glows a little, like you just make everything better. You could have the most hectic moment or be stressed out, and Ally enters your space, and it's like, life is good. Like, you have a confidence not only for yourself, but you help other people feel better, too, which is great. And you're such a supportive, like, as people are gone, like, oh, I can help them, or I can do this. And seeing how hardworking you are and focused you are, like, you... That smile, right? Like, it's just like, yes, like, you are everything we wanna see. So, nice job.
Yes. Ally and I have only known each other for about a month, month and a half, but I have seen Ally in the hallway since she was a sixth grader, and she was timid, and she sometimes needed help finding her way, and that, she's overcome that so well. She is a leader, she knows where she's going, she can get through the school, and she's confident. And all of the things Ms. McGuire and Mr. Brown have already said, they just glow from her. One of the things I like to do with students is give them a survey about things they like and things they dislike about school. And when I asked Ally what her favorite thing about school was, she couldn't choose because she said everything is her favorite. And we don't hear that from middle schoolers very often. So, just keep up the hard work, and you are gonna go far, and we're so proud of you.
I'm Jim from the Board of Education. I've got two questions for you. So first of all, what do you want to be when you grow up?
I don't know.
Not sure? Well, second question for you. So we heard about you being cheesy, in a good way. We heard about your confidence, we heard about the glow that you bring to the people around you. Where does that come from? Like, who in your life, is it a friend, is it a relative? Who brings that to you?
Um...
Awesome. Well, I think your mom might be here, and I'm sure she's really proud of you tonight. But whatever you want to do in your future, those characteristics and qualities are gonna take you so far. So thank you for all you're doing. We need more people like you in our community. Got a certificate and a gift certificate here for you. Thank you very much for all you do.
All right, the Monroe High School Student of the Month is Senior Anara Hubert. Anara is not only extremely talented, but one of the most kind humans that I've met. So nominated by Ms. Lancaster, and I'll let Ms. Lancaster talk about why she nominated Anara.
Okay. I am fortunate enough to have Anara work as a teaching assistant in a small group reading class with me. Initially, he was going to assist with all the reading groups, but after seeing how helpful he was the first day, I asked if I could steal him every day. The group that we're working up with consists of two students who both use devices to communicate but are at different levels as far as reading, writing, and communicating. Having Anara there allows us to each help a student, and I love that Anara shows up to class every day, happy and excited to work with us. He takes an interest in getting to know the students and asks great questions. Anara's positivity, patience, understanding, sense of humor, flexibility, caring nature are very appreciated. In talking with Anara, I know special education is something that he is interested in pursuing in the future, and I think it would be an excellent fit for him.
Keep us in mind.
Hi, Eric.
Great to hear about your caring, and I know that you're a wonderful leader. It's wonderful that we got to recognize you in front of everybody. Here's a certificate to remember the night by, and a gift certificate to go to my school for Barnes &amp; Noble. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We have our Staff Excellence Award recipients.
All right, so I have the honor, Aaron and I have the honor of introducing Caitlin Bukowski. Caitlin is an adaptive fia teacher in the school district. Fun fact about that is Caitlin is one of one, right? There's only one adaptive fia teacher in the entire district. So all of these awards are really special, but to me, this award is extra special because being one of one means that Caitlin has to work across all five buildings. And this nomination came from all five buildings. And that's pretty unusual to be recognized when you're zipping in and out of buildings, right? You're never in one place for too long. The fact that her peers have noticed her when she is running around is a big deal. I'm gonna let Aaron do most of the talking, but I just quickly wanna say a couple of things that come to mind when thinking about Caitlin is that she's an extremely hard worker. It's hard to get to all of the needs across this entire district. She's incredibly creative. And then finally, I would just say that she's just a quality human being who advocates very strongly for her kids, and that's something that's really important in this position. So we're very fortunate to have her. I'll let Aaron talk a little bit about her.
All right, so I had mine off my phone, because like Joe said, there were multiple staff that came together to nominate Caitlin, and so I needed to summarize all the wonderful things that everybody had to say. So yes, she is a small percentage of staff that works in all five buildings, and what comes with that is an incredible feat. She's organized to manage five different schedules, all of the staff in all of the buildings, and all of the keys to all the different small businesses that she works in, and the gyms and everything. I was like, that's a lot. Caitlin has the tools to work with students from the littles all the way up to the bigs, and the same strategies don't always work for those different ages. So she has to be creative in all of her planning. She seamlessly adapts activities to meet the diverse needs of all of her students, and she makes it look really easy. And not only is she an incredible asset to our district, but families really appreciate her as well because she's that familiar face as they move from building to building. And I know students also appreciate that because she's that comfort that they know from elementary, middle, and high school. She is willing to try anything and always acts in the best interests of the kids and their individual needs. She's solution-focused and brings so many creative ideas to the students, to help the students succeed. Her positive attitude, patience, and passion inspire not only the students, but also her colleagues across the multiple schools. We are so lucky to have you here in Monroe.
Can't thank you enough for all the hard work that you do to create a safe, welcoming, and inclusive space for all of the students that you work with so that they can feel confident in all the activities that you're helping to guide them through. From the Board of Education, please keep up all the hard work. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of our Excellence Award winners. And if we could get you all to come up front for one quick photo, Ms. Depry will get a shot for our Facebook. And...
Thank you to all the families for joining us. If you'd like to stick around for a really riveting, long board meeting, you're welcome to stay. Otherwise, you're all free to go, and have a wonderful evening.
Did you guys go out?
And then, I didn't call back, and I was seeing before. It was kinda like, cool photos, but why they were there, nuts.
Out of the view.
We're on to consent items. Do any board members wish to remove an individual consent item for consideration? Hearing none. Right amendment to the record, we're approving the minutes from the Board of Education from September 23rd, 2024. Approval of support staff hiring Abraham Lincoln, part-time food service worker Don Lederman, Northside custodian coordinator Scott Harmon. Approval acceptance of community donations, six $200 Walmart gift cards to Abraham Lincoln, Parkside, Northside, Monroe Middle School, Monroe High School, and the Bauer Learning Center by the Monroe United Methodist Church Monroe Kids Fund. School supplies and several lunch boxes donated to Monroe Elementary by Sierra Mettinger of Blossom Boutique. $500 to the Parkside PTO by the Monsignor Campion Charitable Fund. Variety of school supplies and backpacks donated to Abraham Lincoln by the Monroe Dollar General Store. Variety of school supplies donated to Parkside by Tom Depry. 150 pumpkins donated to Parkside by Schmidt Grain and Beef Farms. A selection of metal pieces donated to the MHS Metals Machining Class by Faith Engineering. 4,000 pounds of steel donated to the Monroe High School Metals Machining Class by Buchard Welding. Approval of the Parkside Safety Drill. Approval of the Public Library Board of Trustees candidate Dan Harrigan. Approval of the Future Farmers of America National Convention and Expo Trip for the Monroe High School FFA students and advisors. I better know, what'd we do with 150 pumpkins?
We gave some for Fall Fun Day for the kids, and the rest we left out front and told families they could come pick them up, and they sure did.
That's fantastic.
They're all over the community now.
That's fantastic. Certainly appreciate the generosity of our community. We're lucky to have folks to do things like that. Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Terry and a second by Nikki. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is public comment. We have nobody signed in for public comment. No old business. We are moving on to new business. So, next up, we have budgetary updates. I think about 99% of the bids are in hand, and many of which are before the board for consideration after this item, or two items after this, following the project update. So we've got Tony and Dylan here from CGS, and we've got Ryan here from Huffman Keel to provide us with an update on where the budget sits overall, should we approve bids before us tonight. So I think we also have an exciting update on reinvestment proceeds from Ron as well, right?
That's correct.
Excellent. Okay. Let's go first, Huffman Keel.
I'm starting.
No, let's do it first, Ron.
Okay. Let's hit the good news first.
I'm gonna pretty much be going over the document that says High School Project Proceeds Update for PMA. Covered much of what I'm gonna talk about in your cover, but I just kinda wanted to walk through the sheet. We concentrating on those two boxes near the top with all the numbers on, so you're hoping I was just gonna point out the pretty charts. I'm not. In that middle section where you see Portfolio Arbitrage Status, kinda the second number down on the far right side is 3.856%. It's kinda that magical percent number where we can maximize our, you know, or keep our entire rebate arbitrage, our entire arbitrage funds, without having to kick some back to the IRS. Basically, when you have tax-free municipal borrowing, if you gain more interest than what you are borrowed at, it's great, you wanna maximize your interest, but you then have to kick it back to the IRS unless there's very specific criteria that is met. So when we first talked about this about a year ago, kind of looking toward that middle-left area, we actually had more estimated interest income at that time, but we also had a lot more arbitrage rebate having to go back to the IRS. And at that point, the board approved some parameters to allow us to take some of the liquid funds, reinvest them in municipal tax-exempt proceeds, and basically get a lower interest rate, but then not only keep all that funds, but also then lower our overall interest rate for the entire project, which then, you know, garners us more funds. And so we've been working on that. If you look toward the upper left, you'll see that for the entire portfolio, for the entire length of time, we're looking at about 4.55% of proceeds, which is why we're going to have to kick some back to the IRS. A couple lines above that, you'll see the potential interest income on balances. That's kind of on liquid funds. You see that's now down to 3.5%. And so that's where we took some of those proceeds. We invested them in the tax-exempt, got less money. Not only, though, did we get to keep all that money, but it also then drove our yield, or should say our interest rate for all of our other investments down in total so that we get to keep more. Bottom line is, we originally were estimating to have about $95 million of total proceeds, 88 million from the borrowing, another 7 million from the interest. And right now, we're projected to have the original 88 million plus the $2 million of interest income that we got in those first few months before we did our full bonding. That's why you see the 90 million is highlighted there. That includes those initial interest earnings, and now another 6.364 of interest proceeds. So full interest proceeds. We're not sure this will be entirely true, so we're only utilizing 96.2 at the moment in case our arbitrage rebate calculation changes a little bit, because it sometimes will. But we're projecting $96.2 million available, so another $1.2 million over and above what we had originally estimated. So that certainly helps in make our budget work for the project and allows us to do more things and make greater decisions as we evaluate some of the opportunities within the building budget.
Excellent. It's fantastic.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Ron.
Go ahead, Tony.
So construction budget update. So the last time we met, we communicated that we are on budget. That still, for the most part, remains true. We are $402,000 over budget on the construction side, which is about a half a percent. So it's not much on a scale of this magnitude, and really, you know, what the overage includes is a few things that were previously considered to be removed to meet budget. So I think that some of those items that are, that now can be funded with some additional interest potentially, can be left in the budget, and that represents the $402,000 roughly. So still pretty consistent news with the budget. We're eyeing up the next meeting for the GMP day. We'll know the rest of the bid results in a minute.
And I sent in a document. I can't see what you guys are looking at, but it looks like this.
It is that document, yeah.
Okay, awesome. And...
Budget Report is the title of the report.
And so this is, once we get to the GMP, Huffman Keel will start providing monthly board updates based on budget performance and just project progress. And this is the document that eventually will be used for this reporting. So I sent this in now, even though it's not finalized, it's still in draft form, just so that you could have a visual representation of all the sources and uses as projected currently in the project. So if you look down at the first line that says total, you'll see a number there that represents what we're projecting as all of the uses in the project. And then the line below that under Funding Sources has been updated since the information that Ron just shared, and it shows what all the sources are in the project currently known. And then the delta at the bottom shows that even with some of the things that we were anticipating removing from the project to meet budget that we're now leaving in, we're still showing a $500,000 surplus within the project because of the proceeds from bond interest income. And so as we work through these last, you'll see we have a lot coming for approval, as we work through these, and we can consider alternates that have been called out during this process for potentially continuing to enrich the project, things that we were like, if we need to cut, this is a place that we can, we don't really want to, but if this is the place to do it, we have some of those areas called out and advanced. Some of them we've already selected because they were just, we don't feel right moving forward without them being in there. A couple of them, some enhancements to the PAC that just make all the sense in the world now that we can afford it, some enhancements to the common space, the new M-room, as it were. And so there's certain things like that, where like, yeah, now that we have the funds, that's no longer on the chopping block, let's move forward. There can be some more of those as we move down the line. And then as some of these other line items dial in and become more precise based on actual costs, potentially we could support the furniture line and give it a little more funds so that we, you know, if we, once we go through the design process and realize that maybe some areas could use a little more support financially, some of those type of items. This is a few off the top of my head that could be supported by these funds. So this will become a much more usable document as we move forward. I just wanted you to see it for the first time tonight, but as we get into it, things will change, and we'll be able to talk specifically to budget performance at that point. But for now, it's there just so that you can be introduced to it, and also to give you a visual representation of what we're talking about, where the budget stands currently today.
Couple other updates under the Funding Sources, just so the board is aware. Originally, I know we were anticipating using $350,000 out of our Fund 50 fund balance in order to purchase some of the kitchen equipment for the project. We actually had, we're in the black again last year for Fund 50, to the point where the state is telling us we gotta use some of that fund balance. And so we were able to update our, up that number to $600,000 for kitchen equipment coming from Fund 50. With that said, I then pulled, we had a $300,000 potential commitment coming from Fund 10 if we had to backfill with the long-term maintenance budget. I've now removed that at this time. We'll use our long-term maintenance project for our other existing buildings and don't intend to have to apply it toward the high school project.
And one of the things that's empty in this line is Focus on Energy. We do anticipate participation from Focus on Energy in this project, but that is an unknown number now. And so we are just, to be conservative, we're leaving out even estimates out of that line for now until we have a better understanding of what the participation would be from Focus on Energy.
What is that?
Focus on Energy is a group that will help subsidize construction projects that are making intentional, energy-efficient decisions. And so with the building envelope, the electrical choices that we're making in the building, the HVAC choices that we're making in the building qualifies this project for some of those funds. We just don't know the full...
I think I wanna take a moment and recognize that, you know, a project of this size, 98 million in scope, and we are 500,000 in surplus right now, is a testament to the hard work of all of our partners, CG Schmidt, PRA, and Huffman Keel, and administration, and PMA, making those smart investment decisions. And that is something to be celebrated, I think, at this stage in the project. Do you have anything to add regarding that?
No, I mean, we, there were a lot of things we looked at for some of the value engineering aspects, and as we're going through the process, we had ways to get to those numbers, so this was very welcome. And, yeah, no, it's, this is one of the unknowns in the project, and Ryan, you can talk to this a little bit, too. Like, when we get to GMP, that doesn't mean that prices, some things don't change yet, right?
So, yeah, we'll continue to dial in pricing. There'll still be, and I've said this again, and I'll be a broken record, as we get into construction, there'll be still discoveries that cause change orders and those type of things. So, and again, when I start to report on this, I'll become more intricate with this document, but we'll be tracking in one of these columns all of the changes that we see. So you can see an actual representation, if it's a contracted amount, any contract amendments through change orders, either adding or deducting, we'll track those. And then when we buy certain things out, certain things aren't contracted amounts like owner equipment, but when we buy all of that and we're done buying it, then we can adjust that number so we can see that if we are over or under. And so in real time, to the completed month, these reports will allow you to see budget performance as we move forward from all the invoices and payouts and change orders that have come through. And so, and the process of getting the best price never stops. So that is, that is always, and CG Schmidt can speak to that very clearly, is that as we work towards buying out or contracting with all of these subcontractors, there's always, we're always asking for value engineering ideas, we're always asking for efficiencies and cost, and means and methods, how it's put together, maybe we can save on labor. So there's all these, it's a never-ending... Um, so there's all these, this, it's a, it's a never-ending process, um, to try to get the most value, extract the most value out of this, this, uh, this endeavor. So it, 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 we'll keep moving, we'll keep hustling for sure.
This thing, go ahead, Big.
I just, I just wanted to make one more, one more comment on my end too. And I think this speaks really well to the district's level of fiscal responsibility and to the work that Ron has done here for over twenty years, that he was able to, um, basically find this extra, these, uh, find a way to get these extra interest dollars by working with PMA and then worked that to the advantage of the whole district. So I think that just continues the work that Ron's been doing here for many years. And I think that in itself is, is excellent. So I'm patting you on the back, Ron.
Thank you, yeah. Well, not, not necessarily, but I appreciate.
Well, I will say this too, is that we do this a lot and we do it for a lot of districts. And it's not always the case that upper-level leadership like, uh, district administrators, superintendents or business managers stay engaged as much as this team is up to this point because sometimes it's viewed as we, we've hired someone, let them do it. And it's been of the utmost value, uh, having Fig and Ron staying as engaged as they are, getting the answers that we need in real time, uh, giving us incredibly needed background to certain things and decisions and the environment that we as third parties just would not know. And, and just being a conduit to just the people that we haven't met yet, um, has been really great. And so, um, you should just know about Fig and about Ron that it's, it's somewhat atypical, the amount of effort that they're still putting into this project and how valuable it is to this project. So, um, sometimes it is just a handoff and that's not the case here. And I'm very thankful that it's not the case. So just, I know you guys don't get to see all of that and, and I do. So I just thought I'd share if I could, so.
Also wanted to point out, uh, that both the construction budget and their construction can, contingency within all their various line items, you also see there's a, uh, an owner's contingency there, basically a contingency for the board to consider things that, that may come up as the project goes on. So basically the, the additional proceeds at this moment kind of become additional owner's contingency that at some point in time, the board will make decisions as to how, uh, we need to utilize those funds. And if there's, which there typically has been, uh, you know, at the end of the project, if there's construction contingency that's left over as well, then, then obviously the board, uh, has made those decisions. And those of you, I think all of you probably have had some of that, uh, uh, if you've certainly been on since like the North Side and or Parkside projects.
What I heard there, and I want to verify this, the owner's contingency is a separate fund we will recover anything extra. In the line item that says high school construction, my assumption is that CG Schmidt also holds a construction contingency.
That is correct.
Any other comments, conversations, questions? Okay. Excellent news. And from that, we're going to roll right into our next item, which is the project update. Uh, we've had continued good weather. Progress has been moving pretty briskly over on the site. Uh, we've got recent aerial footage and the one-page update from CG. They're attached to our packets. We'll have a large number of bid packages before the board in the following agenda item. Guaranteed maximum price is still on track to come at the next board meeting. Uh, that'll mark again the end of the bid package acceptance phase of the project. But, uh, first, uh, before we get the details, uh, further details here with, um, we received news that a grant, um, that GCDC and the district collaborated on was approved. And GCDC will receive two million dollars to be used to expand technical education portions of the new high school. Do we have, are you going to present on that or?
So, all right, so we, uh, Kara is in Ireland.
Okay.
So we are going to have her come to our next regular board meeting to be recognized. So her and Olivia will both come.
Okay.
But, uh, so the GCDC did have a press release and after their press release, we have a press release and I'd like to read that now if I may.
Sure, absolutely.
So we are pleased to announce that we are one of only two Green County recipients of the State Building Commission grant program that supports community projects across the state of Wisconsin. On Tuesday, October eighth, Governor Evers announced our selection as one of fifty awards granted around the state. The project grant was submitted by Olivia Adi, Green County Development Corporation Director, and Kara Harper, School District of Monroe SOAR Director. The two million dollar grant award is to be used for workforce development, growing trades for students across the county. And a large portion of the award will provide additional square footage for our new career and technical education wing being constructed as part of the new high school off Thirty First Avenue in Monroe. To say we're excited about this opportunity to continue to invest in our schools and students is an understatement. More to the point, I feel this is further evidence, people in the Monroe area are working hard to make this a great place to live, work and raise a family. The dollars will be used to expand the footprint of our CTE spaces and further our work to provide Monroe students with the training, life and work skills to best prepare them for their futures in the workforce, tech school, military, college and beyond. As soon as we have our architectural plans adjusted, we will present our new design to the Board of Education in public. Now, this next quote is from Principal Jeremy Jackson. "We're very excited to hear the news of this grant approval. We've been working hard to design and build spaces within the new Monroe, within the new Monroe High School that houses our metals manufacturing, welding, automotive and construction trades programs. And this grant will help to improve these spaces and give our students better opportunities. The increased space allows us to develop even more hands-on, real-world experiences to spark student interest and increase student skill levels to meet industry standards." The construction project is running on schedule. The building design was, was done to allow future additions and this will fit into those parameters. And again, many thanks to Olivia and Kara for their hard work and commitment to our students and greater community.
I think that's worth a clap. Awesome news. Great to see, um, those grant dollars invested to make a huge difference for, um, you know, Green County students and looking for, uh, careers in, in the trades. Amazing.
Just to add, um, some amazing news with that, four hundred and fifty million dollars of ask was in that. Like four hundred and fifty million dollars of other.
Grant requests.
Grant requests came in and they were, they secured us, I think, the largest award of everything. So, of everything that was sold out. So it's pretty amazing what Kara and Olivia did for the district. Good to go.
It's worth saying, do like, one of the goals, and you know this, Nikki, is to get not just Monroe students, but to get participation from all the Green County schools.
Exactly.
And get them coming to this center and exposed to this kind of stuff where they might not have it at their own schools. So we'll be working on that as well.
That's amazing.
That's exciting.
So, and you, you kind of have started that a little bit in the skilled building trades we have.
And it, uh, it looks like from the application, the working name for it is the Growing Green Trade Center. That's awesome. And it will be housed on the new Monroe High School campus.
Yeah, so each wing was designed to be able to be expandable for the future. So we have space in there. Civil engineer designed it that way, the architect designed it that way. So we actually have a meeting on Wednesday where we're going to start looking at the possibilities and what we can get for accurate estimates on the cost for square footage.
Awesome. All right. Other building project updates for us?
Just a couple of things here. Let's see here. So in your, your board documents, it'll go online in the next day or two. The actual construction update with some pictures and, and details from the project will go up on the website and get posted on social media. Um, the underground plumbing structures are being installed. Parking lots have been graded. Foundation walls in a few of the areas have been completed. The system to tie into the precast walls in the gym is in place. There's some pictures of that in there. You can see the rebar sticking up and things like that they're going to use to get that in there. So well is precast out of Alders, Wisconsin. So they would be starting, this is their fourth week of production. Be their fourth week of production for, for the exterior and some of the interior walls that they're, they're creating out of the order. And the goal would be they'll be start erecting those, tipping those up probably early November. So in the next few weeks, we're planning to have masonry that's going to begin forming some of the interior areas. So some footings in, have been put in there and they'll be putting in the masonry for that. So, um, and that's it. That's what I got. Anything else, gentlemen?
I think masonry is starting tomorrow, if I remember right. They're stacking blocks, so that's a huge thing. We'll see something vertical, which is cool. It's a big point in the project instead of working in the ground all the time. And then grading is ongoing. So I know Rich mentioned something about, you know, the wonderful weather. We are very thankful for the dry weather we've had here. And a lot of the grading's been going on with, a bit focusing, um, a little, quite a bit on the baseball fields over to the west end of the site. So that cut is starting to get down to, to grade to kind of start to picture that land and what that's going to be used for too. So, um, site is transforming fairly quickly.
Does this dry weather help you catch up from the wet weather earlier this year?
Yes. Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the update? All right. If not, uh, we're going to move on to the next item. So this is the MHS bid package approvals item of the agenda. Uh, we have a total of twenty-four bid packages for review and approval in front of the board tonight. So the details around those are attached to our board packets. I'm going to ask CG Schmidt and Huffman Keel, and we've got Jesse from Fairgram here to walk us through some of these or answer any questions that we have on each one of the categories. We're going to take them as two groups, more if needed. We'll see if we can approve the first twenty in one motion. I think that we may split out, uh, clearly, right? What I'm seeing from that one. So we'll probably take nineteen, um, in one motion if we're in agreement as a board with the recommendations. And then, um, we'll split out that one. And then there are, uh, four of the, the rating four bids we'll take individually as the recommendations from CG differ from low bid, low bidder. And we'll hear from CG and Huffman Keel and administration on those individual recommendations. Uh, these categories are all before us for the first time. And with, as with previous bid packages, at this stage, some coming over, some coming under. But based on our previous discussions and the funding position that we're in right now, uh, we're in a good place, thanks to those tireless efforts of the entire project team. So.
So these numbers are incorporated into your, your budget.
That's correct, yep.
Turn it over to Tony to start walking us through those categories.
Yep, I'll start with the, the summary sheets and then I'll kind of rattle through the different categories. Just, just, uh, throw your hand up or, or say something if you have a question along the way. I'll be kind of leading the discussion, Dylan will support me if any questions and additional comments. He had a big part in, in getting this ready as well. So, uh, the first, uh, sheet, which is kind of everything on, on one sheet here, uh, identifies those first twenty-four categories. Uh, I'm going to go through all of them in order, but, um, the next executive summary kind of, you know, where I have all the different bid numbers calculated, I'll kind of go through, go through that. So, um, I just will say that all these are hard bid numbers. There are lump sum contracts that will go to contractor right away. No trade management partner type, uh, scenarios on any of these. Uh, first one is air and vapor barrier. Uh, we had two bids, Xander and CM Morris. CG Schmidt is recommending CM Morris to do that work. They're a union contractor, uh, fit skilled trade workers to do this scope. Um, the air and vapor barrier, um, is quite a bit under budget, um, due to really the square footage. This building is a little bit unique in the fact that, uh, most of the air barriers on the precast, uh, are part of the precast walls. So there's a very, very small amount of square footage here, uh, that actually has air barrier as opposed to what was, was budgeted previously. So that's, that makes up that variance. Roofing, we had five bidders, actually no, eight bidders, I'm sorry. And there's various different, um, options that could come into play here. Dylan looked at all those and in those situations, JRT roofing came victorious on that scope. We, the, the big coverage here was, was amazing. And there's been a lot of effort to go in to, to get in the low dollar amount like Ryan had said. So early on, there was some pretty strong savings suggested by roofers. And, uh, we were able to, uh, capitalize on some of that here and it's reflected in this bid package. And I'm pretty, pretty close to meet the budget. Fireproofing, um, we have three bids, one from Xander, one from CF Morris, and then alpha insulation, which wasn't a complete bid. But we suggest moving forward with CM Morris. They are the, the union contractor, again, like they, they were for air and vapor barrier. Quite a bit under budget. Again, it's very similar to the air bear, vapor barrier comment, uh, where we had planned for a pretty decent amount of square footage of fireproofing or significantly more, uh, square footage. And there's just one little part of the building that needs to be fireproofed. Uh, that's the fireproofing spray on top of the, the steel. So, um, the reduction in scope is, is why you see the, the variance in budget there. Um, coiling, folding doors, um, really these next two categories kind of go together. Same bidders, same type of scope. But, uh, we had it broken up into two categories, eight C, which was coiling and folding doors, and eight D, which is overhead sectional doors. That budget really should apply to both of them. So the hundred and ten, um, applies to kind of both of these. I didn't break it out appropriately, but overhead door of Madison is, uh, the competitive one on both categories. Uh, we had four bidders, uh, overhead door, Ranor, Northland Door and Barkle. For the coiling doors, doors and folding doors, then overhead doors are the same group except for Barkle. Really just the, the difference in budget there was quantity of doors. I looked at pre, previous budget and this quantity of doors was, was increased and therefore that's why the bids came in over the budget. Also, there's a horizontal folding door, um, that, that is, that isn't a project that wasn't in the budget previously. So, but that's what causes that to be a little bit over budget. Tile. So tile, um, we had three bidders, Rush Tile, Floor Three Sixty and Northern Illinois Tile and Trazo. You know, Rush Tile is the, the low bidder and we suggest using them. We've had good luck with them in the past. They've worked on some other stuff in the district here. They did Northside and Berks, um, Northside and, um, Abraham Lincoln. So we're familiar with them. Uh, there is quite of a budget, uh, over here as well. And I found that out to be basically the, the wall tile. Um, so the floors were pretty much right on, uh, the square footage previously bid or previously budgeted versus bid. Wall, um, wall tile had almost doubled. Um, so that's the reason for the variance there. Unit cost wise, it's, it's pretty equal to what was in the budget versus what the bid is. So I think we're, given the, the budget scenario, we probably won't challenge that. You know, one, one thing that you often look at in VE options is reducing, reducing wall tile. Um, so that's something we probably won't have to entertain on this project, which is good news. That's probably why you saw the difference in, in square footage here.
I asked a question on that. Is that just like a tile spec thing or is that like installation? Like the, did PRA spec the most expensive wall tile?
No, I wouldn't say so because when I went back to look at our estimate, I took the total on our estimate divided by the square footage and I came up to almost exactly the square, the rate per square foot that the bidders are charging. So I wouldn't say that the, the spec went up at all from previously till now. It's just sheer quantity. So in case, instead of maybe doing in the bathrooms, just doing the wet wall up four feet, it might be, and I don't, I don't know if that's the case, might be all the walls up to the ceiling type of thing. You know, it's just, th- those are a couple of the things that you typically see variance in, in tile quantity, and that's what you're seeing here. That answer a question?
For some of the rest of you and those listening, wet wall means where the, the fixtures actually are where the water is. A lot of times you'll see the tile there to prevent that water penetration and then drywall around the rest of it.
And I, I, I do recall that, and I don't know if it's to the ceiling or if it was to like eight foot or whatever, but I know PRA says that he prefer to have tile throughout the bathroom up to a certain height, so.
And we had opted not to use CMU wall, um, in the bathrooms, uh, to, uh, masonry block, concrete blocks, like painted block, and do framed walls. So having a, a solid surface, uh, impermeable solid surface on that is a, is a requirement, especially on the wet walls because as you all know, home, you know, kids and water in bathrooms, so.
Moving along to wood flooring. So this wood flooring scope is for the, um, basketball court and as well as the stage flooring. It's a special built-up system for the stage flooring. So both scopes are represented here. We got three bids, one from Basement Brothers. One clarification, there are two companies out there called Basement. I abbreviated it in some of these categories to try to make it fit in the cells so it looked nice and neat for you, but everything resulted here is Basement Brothers. Basement Brothers is everything that you see on here. So, um, they were the low contractor, but not by much. Schmidt Custom Flooring came in second and then Stalker came in third. So we are actually suggesting Schmidt Custom Flooring. They are a, a union contractor. We've worked with them before. But, um, yeah, we are. But yeah, we are, the only thing is that Basement Brothers has the basis of design product. So, that'll be up for discussion a little bit later. Part of the reason that the over budget was mostly due to the stage flooring. Some of the square footage went up just a little bit, but the cost per square foot went up quite a bit just because I think maybe just a misunderstanding of what was going to be specced. You know, design development and we keep talking about the design developing on that system developed a little bit. So, that was mainly the culprit for the overage. Moving along to resilient flooring, we got four bids, Hughes Flooring, Mako's, 4360 and Schmidt Custom Flooring. They do the same Schmidt Custom Flooring, they do rubber products. But it is an incomplete bid because the rest of the scope includes things such as carpet, et cetera. And they did not bid on that and this were categories typically sheet vinyl, LVT, carpet, the whole works is most commonly bought altogether in the industry. So, that's why you have them as an incomplete bid. Hughes Flooring is low, appears to be right on budget. Hughes Flooring has done some work here in town with CG Schmidt too, so in the past, so we're suggesting moving forward with them. The indoor track surface, H2I Group and Basement Brothers and Schmidt Custom Flooring. Right now, the low bidder is 78,000 and the second bidder is 82. We are actually, this might confuse you, I'm sorry, but Basement Brothers, we're suggesting moving forward with them. We've used them on this product and you might ask, well, why are you not using them? Because they're signatory, you know, they're not, if they're not union, well, this is not a category that CG Schmidt is signatory to. We're signatory to carpenters, this work doesn't fall under the carpenters' union, so therefore, we can hold a contract for them. There is some familiarity with them as opposed to H2I and they have the specified product.
You're recommending Basement Brothers.
The next one is resinous flooring, so this is like epoxy flooring or polished concrete. Often, sometimes you might see that product in a lot of people's garages, that flake, that flake product they put down. All inclusive in this category, all those types of products are what we consider resinous flooring. So, we got four bids on that, Protective Coating Specialists, Kefco, LNA Crystal and 4360. 4360 just had a partial bid again, so. Protective coatings was most competitive there, so we suggest moving forward with them. 10A is specialties, just two proposals on this one, La Force and Best Specialties. Those are typical culprits we see for bidding that scope. La Force came in competitive on that, so we'll move forward with them on that one.
What are specialties?
Can you describe what specialties, oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
Yeah, it's mostly like fire extinguishers, fire extinguisher cabinets, some bath accessories I believe are in there, so soap dispensers, paper towel holders, things of that nature. Lot of robe hooks, kind of random accessories that don't really come with products like that. So, there's a lot of robe hooks in there as well.
Chingy tables and good stuff?
Yep.
Lots of ozidants.
Usually framed mirrors are in there as well.
And there's always a few catchall things that, or a few specific things that are unique to a project that fall into that category.
Just a couple, help me understand the union, why does the union distinction matter for some of these and not others?
Because putting in wood is a carpenter task and CG Schmidt is signatory to carpenters. So, we cannot contract with a non-union contractor for that scope of work. Carpenters claim that scope of work, putting wood flooring down. Indoor track surface is kind of like a, it's a different product, it's different, claimed by a different trade. Carpenters don't do that work, so therefore, we can, we can contract them for that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And then Jim, just for understanding too, so if, if CG Schmidt can't hold the contract, the school district can hold the contract. So, we did that with the excavation and plumbing because the site excavation was non-union and they were signatory to union for that. So, so we hold that contract. So, if the board, if we select a bidder that's non-union, we can hold that contract. And then we work with Huffman Keel and then we make sure that we get, get the contract correct.
I think we're going to talk about this later, but Jim, for, for like the wood flooring on that one, you guys talked about basement was actually the, the, the design was based on their, their product, right? So. However, since it's wood flooring and you're signatory to the carpenters, you cannot recommend them even though their design is what that
Right.
PRA used and put in the drawings.
Right, which is why I suggested using Schmidt Flooring earlier.
But then on the indoor track surface, that's not carpenter, you can recommend them and even though they're more, you say that you've worked with them before, you've had a great working relationship for them or with them, so on this, you'd recommend them even though they're more. Okay. So, from a board perspective, I personally think basement's probably the right contractor for both of these.
Alright, I've got Charlie Ariani. Alright. Toilet partitions, so sometimes toilet partitions is included with specialties, essentially everything that's in the bathrooms. But due to the size of the scope here, we did break it out, that's why you see some of the same, same bidders. The first one is PSISC, that's a, they're actually one of the specified products for lockers. They decided to bid toilet partitions as well in addition to best specialties in La Force, so we got three bids. I didn't put this on the cover sheet, but we are actually suggesting proceeding with best specialties. There is a caveat with PSISC, they will only install the partitions if they get the lockers. That's part of the different, that's part of the, we'll get to that here next. And also, their product isn't exactly specified. So, for those reasons, we are suggesting going to the specified product with best specialties who are, we are more familiar working with. And we don't have that caveat, you know, on the installation of that. So, that's toilet partitions. Lockers, you'll see we have two main bidders, really it's a combination is what we're suggesting. The, the number two bidder there was Marshfield Book and Stationery. There's been quite a bit of experience, I believe, with the district and them over the years from what I hear. And then PSISC, which they represent Columbia Lockers, which was listed in the spec. So, lockers, there's various types of lockers and that's why you see this kind of weird thing going on. Some people represent a certain brand and others represent another brand. And what we decided to do was break this out because the plastic lockers portion of the scope was quite a bit more cost competitive, cost competitive to go with PSISC. So, the plastic lockers, we're going to go with that company out of South Carolina representing the Columbia lockers, but everything else would be Marshfield Book and Stationery. There's some lockers in the, team lockers in the gym and the details, they just got the rest of the lockers.
So, PSISC will hold their price even though they aren't getting the toilet per, alright. So, just for notes, so when we get to that, approve that list where it says combo, just for the record, it's Marshfield, Book and Stationery and PSISC.
Thank you, Ron.
Yes.
So, have we discussed with them if they're installing part of the lockers? So, if we were to approve the combo, then PSISC is going to be there installing the plastic lockers. Would they not then also install the toilet partitions?
Yes, we potentially do that. The only thing is their, the product that they, for toilet partitions doesn't meet the spec. So, they didn't get that pre-approved, so that's really the reason why we didn't suggest them. Are we ready to move on to dock equipment?
Yes.
Okay. So, dock equipment is basically loading dock, the dock leveler pads and different accessories that go along with trucks that back up to the receiving dock. We got three bids on that, overhead door of Madison, Arbonne and Paul Riley. The nice thing about that is overhead door of Madison has all the coiling doors, overhead doors and the scope. Because those three kind of tie together quite a bit, so. Pleased to see that all come to the same person. Auditorium equipment, so this would be your curtains, your rigging, the stage, or sorry, the orchestra pit, filler and net. Pretty big scope, I did talk to Todd coming into this meeting, that, that budget you see there was represented off, that was based off of a previous project for this category. So, yeah, some of the design developed, developed since we were carrying that budget, so that is probably some, some differences which caused a decent amount of that $140,000 variance. Also, the, the music storage lockers, I think, were another portion of why the, why it was over budget. So, just wanted to give you a little context of why that's, why that's over, but main stage is the low bidder with all the base bid scope. Gofer was next and then sightline was a portion of the bid that, that is only a portion of the scope, but we did evaluate if that was competitive and it did not prove to be. So, that's why we're suggesting to go with main stage for the full scope under auditorium equipment. Interior athletic equipment is next, so there's three bidders on this one, carrel seating, H&amp;B specialized and specialty closers. As you can see there, there's a very, very tight bid spread between one and two, like $10, so. But you can see in the next category, there's some consistency with using carrel seating, so we're suggesting them. They were low by $10. That would be things like volleyball nets, basketball hoops, portable little bleachers, things like that. Actually not portable bleachers, I'm sorry, that's bleachers, but just different athletic equipment interior, the curtains that come down from the ceiling, that type of stuff is included in this category. Auditorium seating is next, so carrel seating and JWC. So, carrel seating was, was low in that category. The nomination of them and interior athletic equipment, I think is good to have same, same person doing them. I mean, I know they're totally two different things, but to have two different scopes is always a good, a good thing if it works out. Window treatments, Wisconsin Window Concepts and lighting brokerage. The reason why lighting was so far over was because they, they had all of the windows in the building. We gave them an opportunity to revise their bid and they hadn't gotten back to us yet. So, we had to represent the bid that they had shown. Dylan did go through this pretty thoroughly and Wisconsin Window Concepts did have the appropriate window blinds that were on the drawing, so therefore, we're suggesting to proceed with them. Gym bleachers, so this would be the fixed bleachers in the gym as well as a few portable bleachers on the south side. Two, two bidders on this, Goodson Company and carrel seating. So, this is where carrel did not seem beneficial for us, so obviously, we're suggesting Goodson moving forward. Next one's greenhouse, so there's, there's two bidders on this one, Wisconsin Greenhouses and United Greenhouses. United was actually the basis of design, but Wisconsin Greenhouse came in pretty competitive on this and I went through the scope very, very closely because I was a little nervous about it because I know United Greenhouse had coordination early on with the engineers, but it's hard to pass up $30,000 towards budget, so we got that, their product pre-approved with PRA. So, that's why we are suggesting Wisconsin Greenhouse Company, that is a company we haven't used before, but we are proceeding with caution. I think it's worth it for $30,000. Wood frame building, so this includes the maintenance building, storage building. Cleary has that included for 276,000. Megs is next and Morton is third. That includes the pole building, the concrete footers, the doors and the windows and the man door, kind of gives you the whole skin shell, basically the whole building minus MEPs and foundation. With caveat, the foundation is, I guess, for one of the buildings, I believe it is like a precast skirtboard foundation. Getting into the weeds, sorry. Wheelchair lift is next, so this is a scope that is pretty unique. We had a budget in there that's quite a bit over budget because there's a lot of different wheelchair lifts. We had kind of your standard run of the mill wheelchair lift in the budget, but when the design came out with the depth of the orchestra pit, there was a pretty specific lift that needed to be utilized for sightlines. So, the other lifts that are out there would have had a taller mast, therefore, an obstructing view to the stage. They call that had to relate to the, the depth of the pit. So, therefore, the product is a little bit more expensive and that's why we're over budget, but we did get three bids on that. What's that?
The wheelchair lift, where will it be?
On the orchestra pit in the PAC. So, it allows, you get, or ADA accessibility from the main stage down into the pit.
I think part of the issue may also have been in addition to the height was you have to be able to come on and then, I think you might have to roll off the other side, right?
Exactly.
Versus having it on one sided.
Yep. Alright, getting to the end here. So, retaining walls, retaining wall, we had a budget of $38,000 and you can see all the bids came in quite a bit more than that. That basically had to do with two things, the, the square footage almost tripled. So, the square footage of the face of the wall had grown since the previous budget. And then also, the, the quality of block increased a little bit too. So, and because of those things, that's why the bidder results are showing decently over the budget. Bagley was low bid, South Central and then Dave Frank, Dave Frank Landscaping was the third. 32F is synthetic turf. That one came in under budget, I think it was just a matter of people being aggressive, honestly, I couldn't find anything for a reason why it was so far under. But sprint turf proved to be the cost effective one there. They do have a decent reputation and they've done a decent amount of in the area, I look behind me, there's Jesse, he's highly involved and he knows a lot about turf. I don't know if you have anything to add, but they're, they're low and they, they've checked out, their product is represented in the area, so we suggest moving forward with them. That, I guess, concludes the summary, are there any questions after all that that we didn't hit earlier?
Which portions of the project are spec for synthetic turf?
Just the base, or the football.
Soccer.
Well, soccer.
Okay.
It had alternate, I noticed, there was alternates in there, I noticed.
There was an alternate in those.
Right, like in.
The baseball fields and softball. That has not been selected and added at this time yet.
Okay, I'd like to group these together for discussion and for action. Attached to your board packets, there is a recommendation summary, bid pack for part four attachment. And it groups it into the first 20 that were covered that I'd like to go over. And I think that what we'll do is we will pull 13C, the wood frame pole building out, which is the Cleary recommendation so that Terry can abstain, we'll pull that out, we'll do that as a second motion. So, on the remaining 19 in that upper table, are there any questions from board members or discussion that we want to have around those 19? And again, the combo for 10D, the lockers is Marshfield and PSISC, PSISC.
Just a clarification, Rich.
Yeah.
Hold me on the bottom of what we're looking at here. We're not recommending basement, I think you were asking each one of these, as you went through, right?
Yeah.
I believe so, I have.
Yes, you're correct. And we'll, we'll take each one of those as an individual motion.
Okay.
Any question on those 19?
Well, I think there is one in there, the indoor track service, where they're suggesting basement, that's not the low bidder. Right, was that your question, if there's any others that? Right? Was that your question, if there's any others that?
Right in basement because they're not signatory to use for that type of work.
This is basement and the track service.
Yeah, the tracks.
There's an element of if basement were to be selected for all of the scopes in which they are up for, there is a bit of a discount in there. So it ties, I'm spilling the beans a little bit on, on the next portion, but we can talk about that here in a minute. But yeah, so there's, there's an efficiency found if basement is ultimately selected across all the disciplines in which they're bidding.
And the one you're asking about. I think Phil's question was whether there were any, whether that is all the things where they were recommending, then not low bidder. And this one is the only other one, let's just answer Phil's question.
Gotcha. And that's in reference to nine F, that's the indoor track service in the first 19. Okay. If there are no, if there's no additional questions or conversation on that, I'm going to be looking for a motion to accept these 19 work categories and associated subcontractors as presented in the board packets. Noting that lockers 10D is presented as combo, that is Marshfield and PSI SC. And it's 19 that is excluding 13C, the wood frame pole building that we'll take separately after this.
Who's that?
Mike.
Mike. Got a motion by Mike and a second by Phil. Are there any questions on these first 19 before we vote?
Just so you have it, I'll give you the total, $7,691,97. For those without cleary.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions, discussion? Okay, by a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion carries. The next motion I would be looking for approval for would be to approve. Yep, I'm just finding the number here. To approve, sorry.
13C.
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 Work category, sorry, work category 13C wood frame pole building to cleary, an amount of 276,959.
Second.
Motion by Mike and a second by Jim. And Terry, would you like to abstain?
Yes.
Terry is abstaining. Questions before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, so now we're going to move down to that lower portion with the, the four work categories down below. We're going to start with work category seven C. It's air and vapor barrier. We have a recommendation from CG Schmidt for CM Morris. And Huffman Keel and Admin, do you have a recommendation you'd like to present?
For the cost delta, I believe it would be more prudent to select Xander in this case. Ubiquitous for doing this work all around this part of the state. And, and for that, that delta between the recommendation that CG Schmidt made and their number, I think it is, is a wise choice to move with Xander. And, and contract directly with them.
Okay.
I would, I would support that recommendation.
Okay. I would be looking then for a motion to approve work category zero seven C for air vapor barrier to Xander Solutions. At a cost of 32,300 as recommended by Huffman Keel and Administration. Motion by Nikki, second by Jim. Questions, comments before we vote?
I'll be abstaining.
Mike is abstaining. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll now move on to work category zero seven F, fireproofing. CG Schmidt recommendation is for CM Morris. Recommendations from Huffman Keel and Administration.
In this case, the cost delta is small enough that I would, I would go with the recommendation of CM Morris. Contract administration comes at a cost and an effort and it's more than $1,600. So for the, for the hassle of it, I would just let this be in the recommendation and CM Morris does great work. So I'm confident in their decision and their recommendation, and I feel like it's the, the best decision in this case.
Administration?
Yes, yep, we agree with that.
Okay, I would be looking for a motion to award work category zero seven F fireproofing to CM Morris for a cost. I think the Xander cost is a. Twenty-three.
Trying to add it in my head.
One moment.
Twenty-three, nine hundred.
Zero seven F.
Twenty-three.
Twenty for twenty-three thousand, nine hundred. Entertain a motion.
Some moved.
Motion by Terry and a second by Phil. Questions before we vote?
I'll be abstaining again.
Mike is abstaining. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to work category zero nine D, it is wood flooring. CG Schmidt has a recommendation of Schmidt Custom, recommendation from Huffman Keel and Administration.
Recommend Basement Brothers in this case, for all the reasons we've already discussed, that flooring was the basis of design. There are some efficiencies with awarding them this work in addition to the, the track that we mentioned before. That, and we've had experience with them and they do a lot of, a lot of great work. We're not, we, we don't have any issues with them historically. And so, and the product, Robbins Flooring is a Wisconsin-based company that produces the flooring. And all K through 12 schools out throughout the state and throughout the region. And, and yeah, I think it's for the, the cost savings, I think it's, it's the wisest choice.
Administration?
Yeah, we would agree with Basement Brothers for that, for that bid, yes.
Here's the efficiencies of having them do both, is that represented in a reduction of the overall bid cost?
It is, yes, it's, it's, I think it's, I don't know, you, it was in an email that I saw, but I don't know if you plugged it in anywhere.
Yeah, it's, it's represented on the dollars.
Yeah.
On what you see in front of you.
Just to make sure that doesn't get lost, right? Because we're talking, we're going to hold the contract for the wood flooring, you guys are holding the contract for the indoor track surface. Where does that savings show up contract wise? I, I don't expect you guys to have an answer now, I just want to know that you're thinking about it.
Sure, and then we can report back where it landed, which side of the coin it landed on.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve zero nine D to Basement at a cost of 526,607. Motion by Jim and a second by Mike. Questions before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to work category thirty-two D, retaining wall. CG Schmidt has a recommendation of South Central, recommendation from Huffman Keel and Administration.
Spacing on the name of the local.
Vaguely.
Vaguely. Yes, vaguely came in great. I think it's, it's, it is a great choice to go with vaguely on this one for the cost. It makes, it checks a lot of boxes for, for this project being local, being efficient with cost. And so I think vaguely is, is the best choice.
Administration?
Yep, the product that he, he showed meets, meets what we, we would approve for spec. And again, low bid and local, local contractors, yeah, absolutely vaguely would be the recommendation.
All right, I will entertain a motion for work category thirty-two D to be awarded to vaguely for an amount of 124,400.
Some move.
Got a motion by Terry and a second by Mike. Questions before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. I believe that is all of those bid packages. Nice work, guys, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you all.
Next, we'll move on to number 25.
Is that me?
Yeah, that's you.
Yeah, nice.
That's dismissed if you like. So approval of the MHS project environmental bid. So next, this next item again is here for action, the details around the RFP or of the recommended vendor are attached to our board packets. Understand 100K is the cost. And as part of the budget, the services, design fabrication are with, are based with consideration of the look, the feel and the personality of the campus. That's what it's going after.
Yeah, environmental branding can be, sounds a little nebulous, but it is truly what it sounds like. It's branding the environment of the school. It is, it's the step beyond just the M logo on places and those type of things. It's the story you're trying to tell, it's the theme throughout this, throughout the school. It's capturing various spaces and tying it all together. So it is an independent effort apart from maybe traditional dis athletics branding or apart from interior design. And so because of that, we broke it out as its own scope and we went out to a handful of providers throughout the state. Got some responses back, I'm sure you guys have read, read my notes there. Two stood out right away just because of the quality of their work and their previous history that they put in their proposals. Through creativity, through quality, and the types of projects that are relative to Monroe. And between the two, as you can see on the, on the chart that you see there, we're recommending the combination of PRA and Amplify. And the, and, and two major reasons we're doing that. One is we have a, we have a locked in budget, it's a hundred thousand dollars, that's how much we're going to spend. And so the combination of PRA and Amplify had the best ratio of paying for design fees versus paying for items that will end up in the school. And so their design fees and project management fees were the lowest. And so that means we get more stuff in the school for our dollars. And so that, or, and/or higher quality things in the school. And so that was incredibly appealing and the fact that we have a great working relationship with PRA. We know that they're creative, we know that they're, they understand the project in a way that they understand to be cost effective and efficient. And, and they work well with this team. Though it will be a slightly different team from PRA doing this exercise, ones that focus more on this. But the ethos of the company will carry through with them and, and we're happy to work with them in this case. And so in trying to maximize this effort. So that's why we are recommending them for those, for those reasons. I'll, I'll answer any questions that you guys would have about the process or about the selection.
Questions, comments? Understand that there is a legacy meeting that they will be a part of.
Yes.
Community be invited to come to, they'll get a feel for things that are important to the community to represent on the campus.
Absolutely, so once they're onboarded officially after this meeting and they're released to, to do their work, then work with the district or whoever the entity is organizing that meeting to make sure that they're a part and, and part of that leadership of that meeting. Or if that's not appropriate, then just capturing the information from that meeting to apply.
Scope of work would be inside and outside of the building?
It is, I would say the vast majority will be seen inside, but it could inform signage. Maybe some of the branding elements on the monument sign and those type of things. But I would, I would imagine, don't know what their design yet is, but imagine is it's, it's going to be a bit of a thing that will pull you through the building. So from wall applications to maybe unique lighting or, or certain elements like that, that will communicate whatever it is that's agreed upon.
Okay, this one is before us for action. Somebody would like to make the motion?
Make a motion to recommend, for the environmental branding as presented.
Motion by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Terry. To approve the environmental branding as presented, awarding the contract to PRA and Amplify. Any questions before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Have a good night.
Yes, you too, thank you.
We are on to public library tax exemption. So annually, we approve a resolution exempting the school district from paying Green County library taxes. It's one of only two, I think, schools that pay the library.
Yeah, a couple of it considered it and I don't know how many have accepted it, but for a while we were the only one. I think there's a couple now that do this. And so basically what it does is the county has a, a library tax. So if you're a municipality that, you know, doesn't have a library, you contribute to the county library tax. And then that supports the libraries throughout the county. If you're a municipality that contributes, in this case, if you're one of the parts of the school district of Monroe and so the contribution is to our library is greater than what the county library tax is, we don't get taxed twice basically as, as taxpayers. So our contribution to the, to the school district to run the library exempts us from then having also to pay a county library tax. And so by adopting this motion, that allows that to happen.
Okay, and the.
And when I say we in there, I was, I was referencing school district Monroe taxpayers, so.
And the resolution that we are adopting is attached to the board packets. Would entertain a motion to approve the public library tax exemption pending final tax levy approval as recommended by Ronald Wilson, business administrator. Motion by Nikki, second by Phil. Questions or comments before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Next item is approval of Start College Now and an Early College Credit Program application. They're attached to our board packets and supported by administration, I believe. Anything to add, Mr. Jackson?
No, they, they apply by the deadline and there are courses that we don't offer. So it's, it's a good option for them to be able to get those credits where they don't have to pay.
I would entertain a motion to approve the Start College Now application requests of Craig Maffidge and Owen Purdue. And the early college for Reagan Schmelzer as recommended by Jeremy Jackson.
Is that an online course for Reagan?
Okay.
Yeah.
A second.
That Phil? Okay. Questions, comments before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a substitute staff update. And I think as a part of that update, the district, our district, like many others in the state, continues to struggle to fill our substitute teacher needs. And Fig and Ron would like the board to consider an incentive to help address the gap.
So I brought some, some information for you about some positions. So just through the month of September for substitute teachers, the district had 31 teaching positions we couldn't fill due to substitute teacher availability. That was just through September. Through the same period, we've had a total of 91 days that have been covered internally by teaching staff for unfilled positions. So teachers give up their preparation period to cover periods needed when someone is out ill or needed for other internal events like testing or required PD or things where we're not able to secure a substitute. So we're working to enlarge, enlarge our substitute pool, which has shrunk over the years with, you know, there's fewer teachers. So a lot of the subs are actually taking teaching jobs or taking long-term jobs. So we're working to, to message that and increase it. And we want the, the Board of Education to consider approving a higher pay rate if we contract substitute teachers that have teacher, Wisconsin teacher license. So we pay $140 a day for a substitute teacher. They can have a sub license through the DPI, they take a course, they apply for their license and they can sub $140 a day to sub. I propose that we increase the pay to $200 a day for substitute teachers who are state of Wisconsin licensed teachers. So there are many retired teachers in our area who may not have considered subbing, but may consider it if, if we have that rate. I'm not aware of any of our area districts who have higher daily rates for state licensed teachers. I did do this in my previous district and we did increase our sub pool with some teachers from area districts that were retired teachers that would look for our jobs first. So my recommendation is this is one of the things, if we could get this passed, we could get to work on it right away.
So do you have a list of people you'll reach out to and make them aware? Or how are people going to know that this is increased so they would consider it?
So we'll, we'll put it out in, in social media. We'll put it on the site. You know, we'll, you know, I think we, I don't know exactly what we have in our pool right now that are retired teachers. Do you guys know? We might have a couple, right? So their pay will, once this is passed, their pay will start, increase to that amount. And then, then we're going to get the work to get the word out and try to get other retired teachers in.
Would the long-term sub rate change too? Or would it just be a flat 200 a day no matter what?
Yeah, this would just be for licensed teachers coming in. So if they take one sub job, that's fine. If somebody comes, this is a long-term, that's a different, that's a long-term contract.
They would still go to their base, which would actually be more than this.
Okay, okay. That was my question. Thank you.
I take the, just the one clarification for people. Just so we know, when we talk about state of Wisconsin teacher license, we're talking a licensed content area or whatever, not a substitute license. That's, that's the differentiation.
That's a good point.
How does that compare to surrounding districts?
So our, our daily sub rate is, is competitive with the daily districts. No, none of the, no, excuse me, with the area districts. None of the area districts pay at a higher rate for a state licensed content teacher. So we do have some, our area districts that do different negotiating with some subs, individual negotiating, but with the size of us, we couldn't do that. It's not realistic.
Last time we looked at sub pay was September of 2022, I think. Was the end of 22? Is that right?
It sounds, seems right, yes.
When we reviewed that, we were competitive. There were a handful of districts not immediate or adjacent to us paying 150 or 160. That was good.
Yeah, we're still, it's still pretty competitive. That rate's kind of held.
We have a feel for number of, you know, the cost, the increased cost of the district for the
I down because I, I get, I, I don't know how many folks we'll get that are licensed that'll come that wouldn't have come before. So yeah, I can't put a number to it.
How many subs do we have that are currently licensed teachers?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
Versus how many do we have that aren't, that are just, just have a sub license?
Yeah, I don't know that answer.
The other question is, like, I know we've lost teachers to Nuclearis for long-term sub jobs. That's, are we competitive with them as far as that pay is concerned?
When I looked at it, yeah, we should be pretty competitive with them from what I saw of their rate. I think we were within about $10 or $15 a day, so.
Outside of when there's individually negotiated arrangements, which does happen.
Just to make sure I'm tracking this. So why would we not consider increasing the sub pay for everybody?
So we're trying to, we're trying to increase. So there's retired educators out there that are maybe subbing in other districts or not subbing. So we're trying to attract them to potentially come into the sub pool, come into the sub pool for us. So I don't know what that number's going to be here. In my previous district, it, it was like six or seven additional licensed teacher subs that we attracted with that. And that was in the, my previous area.
Was, was September a typical month for the number of subs needed? Was it higher? Was it lower?
Usually gets worse as you get to the spring.
Yeah.
So if I'm reading this right, you had 31 positions that just didn't get filled at all.
Correct.
And 91 additional positions that were covered internally.
91 days were the positions. So if, if somebody subs internally, they give up their prep period.
Right.
Or they, if they have a different duty, then they give up something with that duty to cover that class. So if, so if the high school has five periods, middle school has six. So that would be five, basically five teachers giving up a period to cover that day. So five teachers to get one day. And there were a total of 91 days throughout the district.
So I'm guessing that the 31 uncovered are in there. Like we don't, we, nobody picked up, let's say, a teacher out at the high school and we cover within. So that counts as nobody picked it up, but we did cover.
So the 31 are when we couldn't get anybody. And that would be even at the elementary level where then kids are taken and, and they're doubled up or they're moved. And that's where the 31 is coming from.
Well, back to Jim's comment, asking why you're asking for retired teachers who have a license. We were thinking that maybe teachers weren't subbing or anybody wasn't subbing because of the fear of subbing, just because of student behaviors and things like that. But then kind of promoting those teachers who were retired teachers that had experience to kind of lure them in.
Yeah, I understand the, and yeah, thanks for the clarification there. I think what I'm looking at is the, the scope of the problem based on the numbers that I'm seeing. Like we'll only, even if in an ideal situation, we add six or seven folks with an increased pay who are, who are certified or licensed, we still have a pretty big problem. So I think, but I was just curious if we considered increasing the sub pay for the typical sub while also increasing the license pay.
So we, this is just one thing that we're, we're going to be doing. And right now Joe is working with, with Sue with the social media. And we want to start, because of our proximity to Illinois, because we do pay better. So work on some ways to, if people were in Illinois for them to get a Wisconsin sub license and be able to sub here too. So that's another facet. Then we had a couple other things we talked about, but you know, this is where we, so that part of it is still going to happen. We're still going to market to the northern Illinois area within our driving range. But this would just, we're, we're looking for teachers that are retired that had experience or people that have a teaching license that might not be in the pool right now that could get in the pool. And we want to incentivize that.
I think the challenge with raising all is, is twofold. One is that's truly going to raise our total cost by quite a little bit for the sub, sub rates. The other thing is, is as we said, we're, we're pretty competitive with our neighbors. And so typically all that does is kind of start an arms race where then everybody raises their, their rates and we're all kind of competing for that same pool of people. So we have the same people working, but every school district has just agreed, we're all going to pay them more. And so all we've really done is all raised our right, our, our costs without really, you know, finding a new pool of people, which I think is, is what Fig's trying to do with this is draw some people in who maybe are not choosing to sub at the moment.
Well, I think we lost a lot of subs when COVID hit.
We did.
And we didn't get those people back. And this might lure them back.
Well, and plus the fact that our schools rock and our kids are awesome, so.
I'm just trying to, there's been a total potential cost. How many subs do we typically have during a month? Like I, I get that 31 just weren't covered at all, right? But is there, does that mean like we have 120 subs total over a month or?
I have a November report from last year. We had 192 absences for the month of November. Obviously got a couple of days in there with Thanksgiving break, but we had 192.
For that month.
For that month.
For that month.
For that month of November.
And it ranged from 10, you know, 10 absences in a day up to 25 in a day.
So just quick math, roughly $100,000 over the course of a school year. We're talking to try to actually get positions filled so that we can improve the educational quality, right? I mean, that's really what it comes down to is that your teachers are struggling. They don't have prep time. They're covering other courses.
If you raise them all.
If you raise them all. Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Well, is there, come, if a teacher gives up their prep to cover another period, is there
I was just going to say that.
There's compensation for that, yeah. Depends if you're in high school, elementary, how long your periods are.
So you're not paying that if you're essentially giving it to the
All right, so we generally approve sub pay. So we'll take this for action tonight. I would, I entertain a motion if somebody would like to make it to increase the sub pay as presented. As presented, of course, was increasing sub pay for Wisconsin state licensed teachers to 200.
Content, state licensed content.
State licensed content teachers to $200 per day.
And to clarify, that doesn't mean you have to be subbing in the content area you have. It just means that you have a actual teaching license, not just a Wisconsin. Now, I don't want to say just, but there is a Wisconsin sub license, which is different than a teaching license.
So noted. By Mike.
Did someone else make the motion?
I think he made the motion. We got a motion by Mike.
Second.
A second by Jim. Questions, conversation before we vote?
I just, I'm, I'm very budget conscious considering where we are. I feel though that $100,000 absolute maximum and then offset by, by those teacher salaries, it's, it's to me kind of a no brainer. I think the benefits of this way outweigh the cost.
All right, by voice, vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carries. All right. Okay, so we are now on to our operational referendum update. Reminder again that the school district of Monroe has got a question on the ballot for 1.5 million non-recurring for the next four years to maintain services. That's coming up on the ballot November 5th. Turn it over to Fig to talk us through activities that the district has to help get the word out.
Yeah, and just before, before we do that too, we're looking to authorize non-recurring $1.5 million for the next four years. And we had that level of operational referendum roll off the last school year that was gone. And now the exact same amount is what's rolling on, which is why there, there would not be a tax increase from previous based on the dollars. So the board was very conscious of the area when they decided to stay with, go non-recurring first of all, and also stay with the same amount, very conscious to make sure that they weren't going to present a tax increase. So that's what it does. It does not present a tax increase. So Ron and I have been on the radio a few times and done some, some recordings. And I know that's, I've, I've heard on the radio a few times myself. We shared, the last time we were on, we shared some frequently asked questions. And we, we talked with Mike Zweefel on the radio and those spots are playing now too. Information card was mailed recently to the home, I think about a week ago. So that should have all come out. The website is, is updated. So the FAQ and the other information is on there. Any questions that we have can certainly be sent to my office or Ron's office, to our phone or email. And we're happy to answer those. We've been doing some presentations where we presented to high school, middle school staff last week. We'll do elementary schools this week and next week. Was at the Optimist meeting last week. The Kiwanis meeting will be this week. And then any other group that would like to have a presentation or a question answer, we'll make sure that we have somebody, somebody there to, to present to them. So the vote is November 5th. And, you know, we just, we want people to educate themselves so that they know what they're voting on when they make their vote, when they make their choice.
All right. Informational items. We're going to move on over to Leanne and your student report to the board.
So it's in the middle of first trimester now. And on the fall, sparts are starting to end. So tennis, they just ended their season with, I think, the most wins Border has ever gotten. And one of the doubles teams made it third place in sectionals. Volleyball is done with their conference games, but they have one more game this Thursday. Soccer has two Rock Valley tournaments, Tuesday and Thursday. House Country has a conference meet. And football has their final conference game this Friday. Hopefully they win and they get to playoffs. And then One Act has their first submission for their video. So hopefully they do really well. And Student Senate is hosting a blood drive this Wednesday. So, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The blood drive. Anybody can come to that.
That has blood? Anybody with blood? Sounds good. Thank you. Let's, boardsmanship. Have a reminder that the annual meeting is next Monday, 5:00 PM right here. And then of course we have our regular Board of Education meeting, Monday after that, the 28th. And then Tuesday, October 29th, 6:00 PM, Special Board of Education meeting to review state report card data with Eric Larson and the admin team. Administration?
Yeah, so last week was School Board Appreciation Week for the state. And so Donna, her group made some stuff for the board. I hope you all got your treats and cards from, from the high school.
Thank you so much.
And then you also got a gift card from Baum's. Who brought, who brought Baum's? Who brought those in?
Junior Optimists.
Organize that with the Junior Optimists and
Baumgartner.
Yeah, and then, and then there's a little letter here that I'll just read real quick. So, "Dear Monroe School Board members, I'd like to thank each of you for your tireless dedication to the students and staff of our district. We provided thoughtful guidance to ensure our students are given every opportunity to learn in a safe environment with pathways that lead to success beyond the classroom. You have remained steadfast to the duty of your elected offices to help navigate through the increasing challenges to public education and have thereby shown to our students and staff what integrity truly is. It is a tireless job that doesn't reap accolades, but accolades are not why you chose to take on these roles and responsibilities. I believe at the forefront of your reason, your reasons, I believe at the forefront of your reasons, it is and always will be for the students of our community to be provided with every opportunity to succeed, to be heard, and to feel cared for." It's from my assistant.
Thanks. All right. Board of Education Correspondents, I do not have any active correspondence. Committee reports. Jim?
I just, one quick note, so today is Indigenous Peoples' Day in Wisconsin. And so I know we don't have a significant native population here in Monroe, but I just wanted to say thank you to any of the educators who made an effort to bring awareness of Native Nation sovereignty or Native communities in your classroom. And I'm much, much appreciated.
Thank you, Jim. Terry?
Nothing.
Phil?
Nothing.
Teresa?
Curriculum at tonight, we had a great presentation from the ELL staff and all the work that they are doing throughout the entire district and the new curriculum they're using and the coordinated efforts they are doing to support our students. That was a great presentation. And a reminder, well, I guess update, we will meet the first of the month for curriculum in November, but we'll meet both weeks in November and not in December. Okay. Makes sense?
Yes. Mike?
Eric?
From me?
Dylan? Nothing.
Nikki?
I have something I'd like to read if I may.
Absolutely.
So I apologize I missed the last meeting, so I wanted to address this tonight. Two meetings ago, we heard from school perceptions after the surveys had been sent out. So I want to take this opportunity to thank all who took the time to not only complete the survey, but for those who added comments to the survey. Thank you so much for the effort you put in to share your feedback. It's been a while since we've done a survey of our staff and I'm not sure that we've ever asked for one that allowed comments. With that being said, I can't think, think of a more appropriate time to ask you for your detailed thoughts and input than after the past four years of challenges with COVID, the referendum of the high school, a change in leadership, and everything else that's happened since. Change is hard and our district is not immune. I can't promise that all concerns can be fixed overnight, but as I've said before in other meetings, we can't fix what we don't know. For that, I thank you for caring enough to complete the surveys and for sharing your thoughts. I read every one of them. More importantly, thank you for all the work you do to make Monroe School District the very best it can be for our kids. I want you to know you were heard and you are appreciated. Thank you.
Nikki? One other reminder, I believe. Monday, October 21st, I think it's 7:00 PM, National Honor Society induction at the PAC. So if folks want to attend that, it's open to the public, right?
What's that date?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. Next Monday, uh, 7:00 PM. Uh, we're hoping to be done with the annual meeting.
I mean, I probably will leave.
Uh, me too.
I'm, I'm going to leave.
You're gonna what?
FYI. I mean, just so people are aware, I'll, if I leave the annual meeting, that's why I'm going there.
Yeah.
If we're not done.
Okay. Alright, agenda items for future discussion from board members. Liaison reports. Anything from you, Donna? Uh, questions from media? Okay. With, uh, at eight fifty-two, I would accept one final motion.
So, I guess then?
Motion by Teresa, second by Nikki, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, yay. Well, you know I missed when Abby got it, right? You heard that whole story. So, I was traveling. No, I was traveling from work when she got inducted. So, then last year, when she was senior, I sent this thing out, and I got all excited, like...
Everybody else is on board.
And then I started looking back and Kevin...
Like, yeah, but by the time we're born, like, oh, I'm...
By the time we're doing, it doesn't really matter, whatever.
So, you were traveling.
Yeah. So, I'd like planned and planned and planned, had Grandma grab me the whole thing, and she's like, Mom, I opened it.
Fired up the grill?
We proved twenty-five good times.
Good stuff, good stuff.
How are you all?
You didn't put your name on it, so I didn't know if I'd be able to call you.
I didn't. Yeah, yeah.
I don't do that.
It's a team effort.
Yeah, and it was good.
Thank you. And then, and, and so she's like, I said, well, hey, we'll get this figured out.
So...
And, and she's like, in school now. Okay, working on it.
And, and so then we got...
I'm just wondering how to get to the card.
So, we're probably gonna get the... And then the other, the rest of it will be dispersed with other programs throughout the school, because she wants to make sure that the whole initiative and things like that continue as well.
Other programs?
No, not necessarily. Um, but a lot of it will be coming.
I can send yours to you too, I just didn't do that. You can hold my phone if you want. I'm okay with you touching my stuff.